All speakers meeting in order, please silence all your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invitation given by Councilmember Rich.
Could you please join me in the Lord's Prayer?
Our Father in heaven, Father, would be thy name; I come to come; what will be done; my earth as it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread; and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us from temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Praise the Lord.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments?
Yes, we have two individuals signed up to speak. The first is Rob Houseman.
Okay. All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, it means you have thirty seconds left. On your second bell, your time is up and we'll have to stop. So please try to wrap it up. And start with the first person.
Rob Houseman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk about my feelings on what's going on with the budget and some of the things that the city is doing. You probably know that we had a meeting at the Holland Land Office on Saturday. A number of city residents showed up. And there were a lot of comments there that not everybody's happy with what you guys are doing here. And today, I read the newspaper and I see that the city wants to hire another person for the police department for the FOIA requests that are coming in. And they want to put another person on staff. I think the police department is doing a great job, don't get me wrong. But on the other hand, how many employees for the city of Batavia, population of fifteen thousand, how many employees do we keep adding here? You're hiring a grant writer. Couldn't possibly the grant writer, I can't believe the grant writer will be so busy with all of these grants. Couldn't that person take over and do the FOIA requests instead of maybe hiring two people, have one person work and possibly both? I think you, I'm not in favor of any tax increase. I don't care whether it's small or not. We're getting hit around from every branch of government, federal, state, county, city. Why? And we keep putting more people on. I understand they want to hire more officers, like to the tune of five, at eighty-some thousand dollars a year. If I remember correctly, city manager had said, "City streets are safe. You can walk Main Street at any time of day or night. You can walk the side streets. You can walk on the south side of the street. You can walk all over." Well, I'm wondering if the city manager's actually walked at night. I have, and I felt very uncomfortable just walking down Main Street in the summertime. Not a good feeling for me. And so, my point is, if the city streets are so safe, why do we need five more officers? I don't know. I just don't see it. And like I said, every time you hire somebody, it's affecting our tax base. I would think that you guys would work hard for the city residents to not have tax increases and keep things as cheap for people as you can. I'm retired. I didn't have a state job, federal job. I have a, my retirement is in an annuity with no increases. I'll get the same amount till the day I die. The increase I got this year was three point two percent for my social security. With costs that've gone up at the supermarket, gas, everything across the board. Do you think I can survive on three point two percent when you guys are raising all the costs in every form of government in this country and we got to do in the city of Batavia? My other thought is supposedly the population has grown by one hundred people. Is that right? It's about one hundred?
About a thousand people.
Oh, come on. A thousand people? We're up to sixteen thousand now?
Fifteen-nine something.
Okay, so do they, okay, if it has, have you looked at who these people are and what they do? And are they people that are holding jobs here in the city of Batavia? Are they people that are here for our handouts of welfare and things like this? And where are they going? Isn't that an important factor? To me, it is. To me, it is. There's just so much here that I could talk for probably all night about the things that are going on here in Batavia. I just don't support the tax increases. And I think you should take a look at that budget and trim it down. Trim it down so you don't have to do that. See where you can double up people. See where you can, you can make things work without hiring more people. And as far as police officers, okay, I don't give statistics. I don't know. Maybe we do need that. But do we need to hire them all at one time?
Is it the first bell or the second?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, Rob.
I'm done?
If you can finish it up, we can, I'll give you a sentence or two to wrap it up if you'd like.
Okay, just the other thing is the, I go to church in Akron. I see a city police officer, a city police car, a town's in the street of Akron, that's sitting there. First of all, out of the city, out of the town, and in Erie County? And that sits there where, if that car is sitting there, that means we can't utilize it here in Batavia if we need people.
You need a car in Batavia.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
John Roach. John Roach lives on Grandview Terrace. One, I know you're not planning to hire five this year. You're not even sure if you're going to hire five. Nobody wants to pay a penny more in taxes. In fact, nobody wants to pay taxes whatsoever. We all want stuff, but nobody wants to pay for it. And I'm one of them. I don't want to pay for anything, but I want stuff. I realize though that the budget is as lean as it's going to get. Two council members have said they're going to vote against the budget. I would ask that maybe during the response time, they tell us what they would cut enough to have the tax rate flat. I have yet to hear, you know, like a half a parking lot, which isn't going to affect the budget, or not buying radios, which was already voted on. What will you cut or recommend between now and next week that would reduce it to flat? I also saw in the paper, it was a quote, that one councilman answers all his phone calls and gets lots of phone calls. But then mentioned that not everybody does. I was wondering for the public if he would tell us who those are that don't answer the phone calls. I think everybody'd like to know that. Maybe he would explain that. Thank you.
Anyone else? You want to respond? Go ahead.
Well, the council did work very hard on the budget. And our manager and her department heads did a great job. And people want to bitch and complain, but they want a police officer to need it. They want a fire department to need it. But people should be really bitching about the school taxes because that's a joke. The city's taxes in the county is little and the school's huge. So I think our manager did a great job. We did a great job. And complain about the school, that's the worst one.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to comment. I was on the audit committee. So I got to see the budget. Well, my colleague, Councilman Kowalski, was on the audit committee. So not only was everything explained line by line at the audit committee, it came back. And it was explained line by line. Now we know costs went up. Costs for chemicals, for the water treatment plant, I think one of them, alum went up close to one hundred and twelve percent. Then you have to have money set aside for emergencies. Now, we weren't planning on hiring five police officers. That was in discussion. That was a study. So I don't know where that one came from. And sorry, the grant writer, I think the grant writer, they went, yeah, she more than paid for herself in the money that she's gotten back. She's more than paid for her salary. And you know, when you farm up with somebody, you don't get the same quality because they don't have a dog in the race. So as far as a flat budget, what do you want to cut? Do you want to cut two policemen? The population's down. Let's cut two policemen. What about the people that are working, that are taking care of the sewage treatment plant? What about the people for the water plant? We have nine people. You probably should use more, considering how antiquated the plant is. How, where you want to cut, we want to cut there. You want to cut one of them out of there? What about the fire department? Should we cut the fire department? Maybe we can cut one or two of them, the money you're going to save to keep. And that's all good. Those cuts are often fine and good until you need them. Let's talk about vehicles, for example. I have a problem with certain people in management, the fire chief, the police chief, taking a vehicle home. If there's an emergency in the city, should they drive in in their own car, park it, go someplace to respond to a hostage situation or a bad fire? And I'll say it again. I was on the audit committee. And my colleague, Bob Kowalski, was on the audit committee. Nothing was brought up. Everything was fine. As a matter of fact, we both praised the city workers for coming up with a bare-boned budget. And I applaud all the people in the city for the hard work that you're doing.
Can I add one thing?
Go ahead.
Eric, the assistant city manager, brought up a good point. For two dollars and eighty-five cents a day, the average family gets complete police and fire protection, water service, and all the services the city provide each and every day. Right, Eric? Two dollars and eighty-five cents approximately?
Approximately.
Per day. For city services. That's a cup of coffee a day for the average family. For us to provide city services to keep the city safe.
Anyone else? Okay, communications.
I think it's time.
Oh, one other thing. I'm sorry. The police car in Akron. Could someone address that?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
I was unaware of that.
So I appreciate the public comments. And my quote in the paper was, "I want to feel safe walking the city streets at night." And I have walked the streets at night. And most neighborhoods, I do feel safe in. There's certainly some that could use a little attention. And I agree with you on that. But I think the goal when we introduce our budgets is we are, have a very high priority in the city on safety. And we want to continue that priority. So thank you for your comments. And I agree with that. The car is a contractual agreement with one of our school resource officers who lives there. And it's a take-home vehicle. And again, it's a contractual obligation that the school resource officers are allowed to take their patrol vehicles home and back to work every single day.
Do we get compensated for that by the school for their?
Not for the vehicle.
Obviously for their pay.
For their pay, their health care, their worker's comp.
Right.
Correct.
So then it's just, our cost is just the car to get them to and from?
Correct.
So that explains why the car is there?
Can I say something else?
Briefly.
Okay, what about the fifteen other cars that leave the city?
Okay.
I understand.
We got your point. We got your point. Could you just address that real quick? What's the cost of those fifteen cars? About, we figured it out, two by hundred in gas?
Well, you'd have to do individually how many miles. There's many cars that never leave the city with take-home department heads. And there's a total of thirteen cars that are issued for take-home cars.
Including like the school resource officer?
Including two school resource officers. A K-9 vehicle. The K-9 has to go to and from, has to live at the K-9's house. Department heads, which is all again contractual, a maintenance on-call supervisor, water and waste water superintendent, and the Bureau of Maintenance superintendent. So we've got those who work in management positions in water, snow emergency, emergency vehicles, and our detectives take their cars home so they can respond directly to any type of scene because they're on call twenty-four seven.
And they have probably equipment in there.
They have all their equipment to go right to a scene instead of having to stop back at the police station, warm up a car, see if the car works before they leave. So. Again, this is an operational issue, so I'm just kind of, and contractual, so it's a.
I get that. And the other part of it is, we're exploring this year, and I remember talking recently in the budget, that we're going with used vehicles that have already been depreciated to a point that are still in good shape to use for just to and from. So we're trying to cut costs there as it is. So we're not buying forty thousand dollar vehicles to keep ten or twelve years. We're buying much reduced used vehicles, you know, from other agencies and other departments that only keep them a short time. And we're using them for ten or twelve years. And we're saving a dramatic cost on that. That's a new project that we're looking into this year, correct?
That's what we're looking into. We're going to, yeah, attempt to. If we can find good used vehicles, we'll absolutely jump on. Absolutely. I mean, worst case scenario, we budgeted for the replacement of three vehicles that are, you know, new replacements. But if we can find something through that program, we absolutely have no problem doing it.
And this came from like another agency that was doing something similar. So we got that idea. We thought it was a great idea. And we brought it here. As a matter of fact, the constituent Fred Gundell had told me about that. And I passed it on to the city manager. And I think that started that conversation. It was mostly about police vehicles, but I think it ended up into DPW vehicles as well. So we're looking at ways. We're looking at everything. And this budget was as tight as we could get it. There's no frills in it. And it was just because of increased cost of line, sludge removal, various other major things that have to be done where else people aren't going to get drinking water and sewage isn't going to get taken care of. And these are no brainers. They have to be done. So we have no choice. We're doing the best. We were told more bids this year, right? So more competitive bidding? So we hope to see the price go down on that, and that'll help us as well. So sorry to do all that, but kind of, I just wanted to make sure your question was answered. Council President report. Next city council meeting will be held Monday, February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, seven PM, City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. And we have a proclamation today for our historian, Larry Barnes. And we're going to present that over in the corner over there so that Larry doesn't have to travel too far. Presented by Councilmember Briggswell.
Okay, whereas Larry Barnes, city historian of the city of Batavia, resigned his position on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which he held for over fifteen years to the city and its residents. And whereas since two thousand eight, Larry has been an important resource for the citizens of the community, offering his knowledge of its history to any and all who requested it. And whereas during his time as city historian, not only did Larry maintain the historical records, but he has compiled information and data which has contributed to the several books and monographs that he authored. Whereas Larry has been involved with many groups such as the Landmark Society of Genesee County, Batavia Historic Preservation Committee, Genesee County Historians Association, Government-appointed Historians of Western New York, and the Association of Public Historians of New York State. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Batavia does hereby congratulate Larry Barnes, city Batavian historian, on his dedication and service to the city and wish him and his family good health and happiness for years to come. Thank you.
I lost my wife. Where is she? As you might expect, I put together a lengthy oration right here. And my wife said, "Well, you could eliminate the bill, plenty pages, and just do the first page and the last page, and that would be still too much." I listened to her and I have a few brief remarks I'd like to share. I don't know how well you can hear me over there. And one of the things about getting older, I'm eighty-three this year, is that the first part of you that dies seems to be your teeth. So I have artificial teeth, and it makes it difficult for me to speak and speak to be heard. So please bear with me. I want to share a short anecdote with you. I taught classes at GCC for thirty-seven years before becoming the city of Batavia historian for another, I counted sixteen, about fifteen years, by the way. Those of you who don't know me very well, often assume that I must have been an instructor in history at GCC. When they learn that rather than teaching history, I taught psychology courses, they are puzzled. How did I make a transition to history from psychology? Well, here's the answer. When I retired from GCC, I started looking around for opportunities to do volunteer work in the community. Then I learned that the staff at the office for the aging helped to place volunteers. Subsequently, with the assistance of OFA staff, I discovered that then-county historian Sue Conklin was actively seeking volunteers. Sue had received boxes of records from the years when Paul Weiss had served on city council. And these records needed to be sorted and organized. So she said, "Would I be interested?" Well, you know, why not? I thought. And soon I was off and running. In a nutshell, this is how I acquired a job as a volunteer in the county history department. Now let's cut to the chase. Long story short, the knowledge I acquired in working through these records fascinated me. Pretty soon, I became a city of Batavia historian buff. Eventually, I came to author or co-author three books, write many monographs, and create numerous oral presentations, often in a PowerPoint format. In the thirty-seven years I taught psychology classes, I never imagined that here in two thousand twenty-four, I would be standing here in recognition, not as a psychology instructor, but as Batavia's city historian. I didn't even know which was an elegant one. You do, don't you? I thought this might be an anecdote that was of interest to you, how I became an historian when I was trained as a psychologist. I thought you might find this of interest. I also thought that it might inspire a future historian to follow the example I hope I set. So I want to thank you all very much for the recognition. It's been a privilege to serve you, to get to know everybody, and to, above all, learn a lot of history that I had never guessed. Thank you.
Okay, we've all been given a copy of the December twenty twenty-three financials. If there are any questions or concern on those, or anything you'd like to add or subtract, or feel there's an error anyplace? Okay, so are we all in consensus to approve the December twenty twenty-three financials?
Yes.
Okay, those get approved. Also, received a copy of the January twenty twenty-four minutes? Any questions or concerns on those? Okay, so are we all in consensus to approve the January twenty twenty-four minutes? Okay. We have four agenda items today. We'll sign those now. Item seventeen, twenty twenty-four, various committees and boards. Yes, committee? Item eighteen, twenty twenty-four, KVA Business Improvement, Beerwong, Mr. McGinnis? And item nineteen, twenty twenty-four, the budget ordinance scheduling of public hearing, Mr. Beely? And twenty twenty-four, the resolution, local law for the water rates. Mr. Quitchell? City attorneys report?
Yes, Council President. We remain busy working on a variety of matters across the board, including contract matters, real estate matters, interminable agreements, tax foreclosure matters, as well as general legislative matters and council departments and city managers' office. But at this point, there's nothing specific to report on.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney? City managers report?
Thank you, Council President. Just a few updates tonight on ongoing projects. The Bank Street water line project will be wrapped up this spring.
Correct.
And I've asked Brett to give you an update on the Streetscape project as well and some of the timelines. As you're aware, the goal is to break ground in March, April for the police station. So there will be construction work on Bank and Alba for the next eighteen months in relationship to that project. We'll probably need to use the parking lot, city-owned parking lot across the street for staging of materials. And then as that project moves along, I want Brett to give you an update on the Streetscape portion of the project.
Are we going off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
So the Bank Street Water Project, first off, Rachel was speaking about, we've got four surface connections to put in there. And then in springtime, final pavement will be done. So that'll take care of that water main project. So we're actually kind of doing this project in two phases, like Rachel was saying. It's going to be about eighteen months of Bank Street kind of being torn up. So we started with the water line. In the spring, early summer, we're looking to break ground in, on the police station. So we'll do that. And then as that kind of comes to, close to being done, we're also entering into a Bank Street traffic calming and Streetscape enhancement project. Right now, we're at about fifty percent as far as designs are concerned. So that will take place on the back end of the police station. So that'll kind of be what culminates, wraps everything, kind of ties it all together. Like I said, design plans are at fifty percent right now. Tentatively, we're looking at twenty twenty-five, next summer, as to, actually, it won't be next summer, it'll be the following summer, as to when we get into construction for that project. That'll be a typical project where they'll go out to bid. It is a federal project, like the Richmond Harvester project, where it's eighty percent federally reimbursed. And the remaining twenty percent will be paid for using our CHIPS funding. So that'll be the service revenue for that. Any questions or anything on that particular project?
Not that project, but how is the Bank Street water issue going on? And how's that going to come in with the construction of the police station? Is that going to affect anything?
Nope, their project's all good. It's stubbed, ready to go. We worked with the architect on the police station project as well as our owner representative, Ken Pearl. So we tied him in with TY Lin, who is the design and engineer for both the water project as well as the Streetscape project. So it's been all projects on hand, working together to make sure we had everything ready to go in order prior to anything taking place. So once that building is up and running, we're ready to go. They can hook right into the service that they need for that building. So it'll all be tied in pretty well together.
Couple other items I had were lead and copper.
Rachel, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
While we're on that, specifically, what parking lot are you going to use for staging the materials? Rachel, you said across the street, and I just.
Sure. Specifically, the city-owned parking lot across the street will be staging materials.
Across the street from what?
So J.C. Penney's parking lot area.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. And we'll be working with the market to make sure they still have a space to operate. Just a few other items. Brett and I were at NICOM conference last week, Monday, Tuesday. And one of the big items that was discussed was the lead and copper rule, which we had Steven Wadvogel come and do a presentation on. We're facing about thirty million dollars of lead replacement. We're facing about thirty million dollars of lead replacements, not only on the public side, but in the homeowner's side. So, I handed out the lead brochure again. We are meeting weekly now to try to deploy a plan, because by October, we need to identify as many lead or non-lead services in the city to gain a better understanding of what our replacement will actually look like, and to hone in on that thirty million dollar cost. There's been new rules that have come out that basically say you can't replace the city's side and not replace the owner's side. So, legally, we need to work through some of those challenges. The city of Buffalo is doing that now in Newark.
Newark.
Newark, New Jersey, they replace three thousand?
Uh, no, Newark, New Jersey plays twenty-two hundred services.
Twenty-two hundred services.
Yeah, so twenty, yeah.
Right.
Two-hundred-twenty million?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we are, don't expect that type of project cost for what we will be doing, but this is extremely significant. This does lead into, when we talk about the resolution for the water, we have to start building capital funds to be able to make these replacements. This is not a, we should do this, this is a, we have to do this. So, we're doing everything in our power to look at grant funding. We're gonna need to look at, if we do not get the grant we applied for this year that was going to have eleven hundred pothole locations?
Yes.
And potholing is just discovering what line it is, that's what it means. It's an exploration process, because you need to identify what the line is, you need to put it into G I S, and you have to have it issued with the report that we must issue in October. So, we're very hopeful that this grant comes out, we're able to do it. If not, we're going to have to look at other ways to get information. Right now, we've done mailers, we've asked for support, we're gonna be reaching out to landlords for their buildings. We want you to ask your friends and family to fill out the information online for their services, to identify if they're lead or not. And Brett, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so basically, we've got roughly fifty-eight hundred parcels in the city of Batavia, and our best guess, and this is just, you know, the shot in the dark, but we're thinking there's probably three thousand lead lines that we're gonna have to end up replacing, and anything that's ever been on the downstream portion of lead is considered lead if it's galvanized. So, with an older housing stock, we're looking at a huge, huge task here, and if it is three thousand, that's roughly a thirty million dollar project that we don't have a choice on. So, we need to be proactive on this, get ahead of it, and really, we need help getting inventory. So, anybody, we are more than happy to go to somebody's house, see what their service is, we can have them take a picture, send it to us, but we've gotta get the ball rolling. This is an ever-moving target, too. Right now, it's October twenty twenty-four, that could change. It could be pushed in the future, but either way, we've gotta get it done, we've gotta get it taken care of, and right now, the date is the date, it's October twenty twenty-four, so we have to move as though that is when we gotta have that inventory in. But we're more than happy to field any questions in DPW downstairs in City Hall, if anybody has any, you know, concerns about the status of their pipe, what the material is, or if they just have general questions in anything to do with lead, we're more than happy to help anybody that we can. But we might get to the point where we literally have to use an intern or, you know, some sort of staff where we've gotta go door-to-door and start getting this inventory, but it is crucial that we get the word out that we need this inventory as quickly as possible.
So, what you're saying is, they can read this little pamphlet, it explains on how to deter it, and then use this little scanning thing, and they can go right online, and then write their address in, and that, that address will be one address we don't have to send somebody to?
Correct.
Because it will have the information on it. So, their cooperation will help us.
Yes. Yeah, and one thing to keep in mind is, this is simply your water service line, this is going from the water main that's in the street into your basement, more likely. That is all we're concerned about right now. This is not talking about any potential lead pipes within somebody's home, within their walls. This is simply the service line that we've gotta get in.
From the middle of the street to the wall of your house?
Yeah, correct.
Yep. I wanna give an update on city center, and I'm gonna have Eric give the update on preparation for construction of silo demolition.
Yeah, so as you are aware, with council, we came to you about a couple months ago with our contracts that were ready to be approved for the mall entrance projects. We are in the process right now, working with the contractors and our architects to procure what they need for that project, and the goal is to have as much of the supplies here on site as possible by April fifteenth, and on that date, we hope to begin the demolition of the silo entrances. It will take place as pretty much a demo all at once kinda thing, so we're not gonna have the ability to leave one of those entrances open for a time while we do another entrance. They're gonna take them all down, they're gonna build them all back up. We're looking at about a sixty to ninety-day time period for the completion of that project, and I'm pretty confident that we can stick to that, because these contractors have large school projects that they have to move to as soon as the school year is over, at the end of June. So, it's kind of a little timeline to get it done. We are going to be communicating with our mall merchants, we're gonna be, once we have actual times and understand when things are gonna happen, we will ensure that we get it out to the public so they understand. There will still be multiple ways to enter the mall, one being the entrance right downstairs, that's not going anywhere. The entrance over by Dan's Tires is not going anywhere, so there will be, always be at least two ways to get in and out, but we will keep the public as impressed to what's going on as we possibly can, as well as share with the rest of the mall merchants so they can let their folks know also. So, we're excited. This has been, if you recall, this was a D R I thing back in twenty seventeen-ish. It was something that I think I attended a meeting on my second day here about a year and a half ago, and it's been a project we've been pushing through to try to get done. Brett's department's been a huge help with that, as well as our mall staff, so we're really excited to get that going, and hopefully have some nice, safe, secure entrances to the mall. Eric, quick question. How's the mall roof and everything holding up? Is there any major leads, any large bucket? Not in the concourse, not anything that we've replaced. We do have, as we mentioned in the budget meetings, a replacement plan for the roof over the theater that we own, but as far as what we've done to repair it in the past three to four years, it's held up very well. Okay, good enough.
Still under warranty as well.
But I mean, there's many people that probably haven't been here since that. They should come and check it out, because it's nice and dry and warm, and there's no buckets anywhere, but I didn't know if I was missing something in a corner somewhere. Once they get through the entrances, there's no buckets. The entrances are still problems, which of course, we're addressing in the next two to three months. Yeah, the entrances are still pretty bad, they need to be addressed.
Yep. So, just a few other projects. Jackson Square, they did partial construction of the stage, they'll be going back, finish up the stage, do some iron work, we have some furniture that'll be moving in as well. So, we're very excited, we've been working with all the property owners around Jackson Square, some new lighting will be back there, and we are hopeful, or we believe, that project will be finished up well in time for the Bits Concert Series. The annual congressional direct spending is coming up, there are opportunities for the city to pursue funding directly from federal agencies through our federal representatives. So, we're looking at three different projects to submit. One is the Pearl Street Water Project, which is about four years out, so it's good timing to get in and try to get in line for funding. The other is G I S mapping of all our water and sewer lines, roads, and signs, which we do not currently have, so we're looking for grant funding to pursue to be able to have that, all of our assets in an online system. Right now, we physically have to run back and look at books of maps or on a computer file that's not interactive and is not easily updatable. The other things Brett and I learned at N I Com, there is a big push from the governor's office, and in fact, we just got an email to certify communities as pro housing, so we'll be discussing that with council on the twenty-sixth. And we're still in long-term negotiations with the town of Batavia, they continue to exceed their sewer discharge limits. We have presented them with a new contract that their attorney is looking over, so I know I've talked about it for two years, but we are very hopeful that you will see an agreement and a contract come before you in the very near future, and that is my update.
Questions? Last business? Okay, Resolution seventeen, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards.
Second to that, Mr. Briggs? Questions or concerns? Call roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Guy?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Guy?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
And Resolution twenty twenty-four, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution introducing two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget ordinance and schedule of public hearing.
Second to that, Mr. McGinnis? Any questions or concerns? Call roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Guy?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Yes. And Resolution twenty twenty-four, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution introducing a local law amending section one eighty-four dash forty-one, subsections A, B, C, and O of the Batavia Municipal Code to establish new water rates, meter fees, and a capital improvement fee, and providing for public notice and hearing.
Second to that, Mr. Beely? Questions or concerns? Call roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Guy?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Guy?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.